All right.
All right.
Good.
I guess I will call the meeting to order for the joint meeting with the city council and planning commission and going over the unified developmental code and I'm gonna hand it off to.
Gotcha, Jeff. All right. Hi, everybody. I'm Jeff Motsky. I am a community planning project manager, otherwise a senior planner with Bolton and Mink. And we have been tasked at Bolton Mink to work on, for the calendar year of two thousand and twenty-five, developing your zoning and subdivision codes into kind of a joint code. It's called a unified development code. So it's basically the essence of combining subdivision and zoning codes together in one. And just reformatting it, trying to make it a little more user friendly, adding some other things that I'll go through tonight. I'll hit the highlights of some of the main things that can help updating and make it more user friendly as well as giving a little bit more incentive based things for some of your development, whether that be residential, commercial, and a few other things in your, in your processes through planning commission, city council, and administrative permitting and application process type things. So, a brief overview, as you go, as I said, you tasked us to look at the unified development code. This is a picture of your current zoning map. But looking into the, some of the industry standards for your commercial industrial residential development, looking at, we looked at the, kind of the existing development pattern of New Prague, how your future market urban development changes are, and looking at some of the clarifying ordinances, including some tables, some figures, put some more visual illustrations in that makes it a little bit easier to follow, a little bit easier not only for your staff to administer and share with public, but just for the public in general to find something as well and ensure legal compliance. I was, just a little background on myself and just kind of my experience with some of this. This is a great opportunity to kind of go through your code and make it a little bit more, as I've said it many times, but user friendly so that people can navigate through your code. And one of the hardest things to do is when you get that call, it's, I can't find this in your code. And share with me how to do it. And it's a little bit easier when you put something on a website, create a handout or other things like that to help your public through that, those code updates. I was a city planner for Prior Lake for over twenty years. I've actually been with Bolton Mink for the past two. But prior to that, I was in Prior Lake. So familiar with Scott County, familiar with Ken, know this area and kind of know the ins and outs of how these zoning and subdivision codes works because I was on the ground running it. And I'm in Prior Lake for the last couple of decades. So it's, again, firsthand knowledge of when, when your staff gets that question, when you're planning commission, when you're council, when you get those questions, it's easier when you can navigate people towards the code and, and really point out, it's that page. See that page? See that big chart that's really colored right there? That's kind of the, the go-to sheet. Want to go to the next slide, Ken? So that, as we looked at your schedule, as I said, we kind of started right at the end of two thousand and twenty-four, but really got into it in, in two thousand and twenty-five and had been using the course of the year to navigate with your city staff, had a few work sessions with the planning commission as well. I won't go through every little phase here, one, two, three, and four, but we're, we're getting close to the end here. We're, we're almost into phase four here of our public hearing and implementation. That would be kind of our next steps as we approach here November into December. But we've done a few drafts of your code, three in fact, I believe, and we've done some public engagement as well. I'll go through that on, on a future slide, online survey. We were at checkout New Prague to share with a bunch of people in August. And as I mentioned, a few other work sessions and workshops with the planning department as we, as we kicked off and, and looked through the, the code for the last, last several months. Next slide. This is that community survey that we not only shared online, but we also shared at checkout New Prague back in August. And I will say, at Bolton Mink, we do a lot of surveys and drafts that we've done in the past for various types of things, not just ordinances and comp plans, but other things. But we actually had quite a bit of responses to this survey as we, as we navigated through the, through these questions and codes. We tried to keep them simple, make it easy enough so people could hit the highlights of, of some things that you were wanting, some answers to questions. One of them revolved around some of the architectural standards and architectural design for some of your commercial industrial buildings. Another question talked about permitting, fence permitting, or other types of permits. And shed permits, would, if the city offered a free permit, would you get one, kind of thing? How do you see it on those? Graphic that you see is a question about accessory dwelling units and would people take advantage if that was something that the code off, offered? What kind of options that might be? And then in regards to some other aesthetics, or parking, or regulations that dealt with lot sizes, things of that nature. Try, again, try to keep it simple so that we would get a number of responses. You want to go to the next slide? And we did actually get several responses for that. So over two hundred and seven, to be exact, is the survey responses we have. These are kind of the results that you have. Of course, ninety-one percent lived in New Prague, but we offered it to everybody, even people because they live outside of New Prague because they use the, the goods and services, even if they don't live here. Overall, a lot of the responses that we had did reaffirm some of the topics that were of interest and highlighted in the code updates that you and your staff highlighted, kind of in a, in a list that you gave us of things to be, to be changed. Couple of highlights that, that I wanted to point out. One of them on that, on that slide bar where you see green, orange, and blue, kind of on the left side there, talks about utilizing short-term rentals. That's a question that kind of comes from accessory dwelling units. Overall, that's pretty common that we see. Most people don't desire short-term rentals, especially in bedroom communities or suburban communities. It's more of an urban or, or inner urban, big city type of, type of amenity that, that's offered. Accessory dwelling units was something that a lot of people did feel that they might take advantage of if there were some options to do so, especially permanent housing for themselves or some loved ones. A lot of people will take advantage of that. It says forty-eight percent up there. Just because of the close proximity, you know, for instance, you're an aging parent or something. You like the house, you sell that, you know, give or sell the house to your kid, but you want to live in the backyard or something like that, or, or still live in the home as an accessory separate dwelling unit. That's something that you see more common, multi-generational living, or something of friends and neighbors that, that healthcare givers that, that still do that. That's kind of an option that's, that's moving strongly through the, through the national scheme. And so having something as an option is, is, is an advantage in, in a community. And so that's one of the things we, we looked at as well. Trying to think if any other highlights hit. The last one on the, on the lower right over here that talks about architectural design in commercial industrial buildings. I'll go through that in a second, but these were some options of materials for exterior design. Insulated metal panel is one that's becoming a lot more popular. Obviously, brick and stone is something that's a very desired amenity, but that insulated metal panel can increase some cost efficiencies for people, but still allow for something that would be desirable.
And, and look nice. Yeah, I would say a lot of people wouldn't even realize their insulated metal panel today. Now, twenty years ago, it might have been a different thing.
Correct. So, so that's, that's at sixty-four percent, some concrete panels as well. So we provided some options in your draft code that would allow some flexibility to allow some of these materials or some of the styles to the building and create more of a pick list for your development, private development teams or other things like that that, that could desire future development, especially on these properties that, as I understand from Ken, in the past, you kind of picked your architectural design based on the properties that the city owned based on the buildings before you sold the building. But when you don't have control of the, of the property for sale, you want to have a little bit more into the code that would allow for, allow for the city still to have some carrots, if you will, to, to explore.
Probably most applicable to like the industrial park where we, you know, today, you could build just a whole building with no adornments, just very vanilla. And I think the EDAs take on it, hey, we're gonna sell a lot, but you're gonna have to put some wainscoting along the bottom to, you know, kind of spruce it up, something around, you know, visual elements around the entry door, that type of thing. We've never had anything in the code, so this is kind of what gets at that to a degree. Not, not like we want to have, you know, face brick on every industrial building is that would, you know, price everybody out. But just something to give a visual, visual interest to it.
It's not like legal.
Yes. Exactly. We know, we know we can't force, you know, super high dollar things, but we want it to look nice. We want to have something.
I think one of the things that's in our packet, but you failed to, I think, address here is parking of recreational vehicles.
Oh, sure.
And that's huge in many neighborhoods. We've got trailers, we have RVs, we have boats, we have, you know, all sorts of things. So it looks like the survey is saying that they would prefer paved and concrete surfaces over others. Is that written into our code anywhere?
Yes, that was added as a requirement. So today you could park a vehicle in your front yard on the lawn. This would not allow that to happen going forward. You have to have it on a paved driveway.
Unless you pave your front yard.
Which is another topic we'll talk about, you know, impervious surface and all that. We don't have those requirements yet, but we've talked about becoming an MS four city. Those restrictions will be coming. So yeah, the days of paving your entire lot will be coming to an end by mandate of the state. Yes, so.
Yeah, and you, and you're right. You, you kind of hit on it. Some of those recreational vehicles, if it's not a vehicle, if it's a trailer, if it's a fish house, ice house. In the off-season, people like to put those against or adjacent to their garage on the side. They want to put them in a landscape rock bed or something like that. There's things that you can allow in the code that kind of allows that if it's off-season, it's more stored there, it's not moving a lot. But, but as Ken said, it's best on pavement, best on concrete because it's not gonna mess up the yard and things like that. And you want to have one of those things in the code to allow that. So that's kind of why that question was in there. It's kind of right in the middle there where you see like the lowest, be expected that grass and mulch surfaces are not desirable because you're gonna cause ruts in your, in your yard and such.
Is that immediate or is it already possible?
When, when this would be adopted, we would have to have all that language in there. Upon adoption is when things would be. I'd say most people don't park on, on grass areas, but we have a few that do do that.
And in my experience in decades of planning, I, it, it's nice to have something in code when, especially if a garage goes up in the backyard. One of the problems I had with a few residents were they want to put a garage door to it. Well, as soon as you put a garage door to it now, that means you're probably going to be somehow putting a vehicle or moving a vehicle to get a trailer in and out of there or something along those lines. So then now you start thinking, well, if you're gonna use it for storage, that's one thing. But if you're gonna start using it and there's some property owners that might want to use it more regularly, they're gonna mess up their yard to do so. Or they're gonna start paving it illegally and put down more hard surface than really what is, could be required on a property if you were to set up impervious surface or hard surface limitation. So in setting these codes, you're trying to set yourself up so that you don't have those future problems or violations or something like that on, on a property where people are putting vehicles or storing vehicles in areas that become problematic for a future code enforcement situation.
What if something is already that way? They grandfathered in there or?
So if it's something that sits there, you could call it illegal non-conformity if it's not really moving. But a lot of these things, they're gonna move from time to time because that's the whole operation of them. It's a boat, it's a fish house, it's whatever they're gonna use them. So if they're moving them constantly, you're going to, at some point, they have to put them back. If they're gonna try to put it back there again.
But I'm saying, what if they already put asphalt or concrete down?
That's something.
And now they come, the code now says that's out of.
If they have a higher percentage of, of hard surface than what's required, it's kind of illegal non-conformity. It's like having a gravel driveway and now you say, we don't want to have gravel driveways on these properties. You can only have paved or concrete driveways. That doesn't mean every gravel driveway in town has to get paved in concrete within the next year or two. It's just when they make improvements, they generally do that. But until that happens, yeah, it's, there's legal non-conformity. It's just like anything else. It's grandfathered in. So there might come some time when they say, hey, we want to expand this area of our house or something like that. But you can, but now you've got to cut back on your asphalt too that's, pull that into compliance. So it, yeah, we don't make people do it right away. It's usually a carrot and a stick situation later on down the road. So we took your, we took your zoning and subdivision code, basically combined the sections into six. I, I know it's a seven there, but the seven section is just kind of the effective date. So basically six sections of your, of your future unified development code. So but after title, a, a whole section of rules and definitions, which is quite long. But trying to combine those definitions into and establish some that you don't have, some that realign with more modern definitions and, and clearer text. Something as simple as, you know, in some cases you see like how building height is measured and things like that. It's, you wouldn't think that it's, you have to.
It's a big one for us, like. Making sure we're consistent on that, yeah.
How do you do that and such like that? So. Section three is the, oh, I was just gonna go through, section three is all your applications from an administrative perspective. Four is all your zoning districts, your zoning map, the districts, how it's set up. Section five is a large one because it's five and six really because five is kind of the, well, I'll show you the use chart on the next slide. But it talks about all the uses and where they're allowed. What's the conditions upon each one of them? You had a few strays that kind of have been tacked onto the code in the last decade that kind of got added on to different sections of code. And so we tried to combine those and simplify them into all one area. And then section si- six is your dimensional standards charts, your, your setbacks, your characters. We talked about architectural design, recreational storage, subdivision design standards at the end that talk about when you're plotting a property, that's your roads, your utilities, all those regulations that you, that you require on that. So those kind of got lumped into the more development character section if they have. So this one talks about section five and six. I just mentioned section five. This is just a snippet because it's obviously alphabetical and this is only on the slide, only showing A through C. But the whole code alphabetically, all of the use districts that you have, correlated with each zoning district and whether they're allowed as a permitted use, as a use that's allowed with a conditional use permit, or as an accessory use, whether it's P, C, or A on this chart. This is something that a lot of communities are starting to go to as a quick reference guide. Makes it easier on your staff, it makes it easier on the public to really kind of cross, see across the board when they're looking at a, a use district such as an automotive business. What, what districts am I allowed to be in? Am I allowed to be in there just by right as a permitted use? Do I gotta get a conditional use permit? Those kind of things that they can kind of glance through this chart. Below this chart, there's even the more conditions that lay out for each type of use district. But this one, this chart goes at the top and ends up being a couple of pages long. We tried to color code it to make it a little more visible when they're looking at it online as well.
It's probably the number one thing we get asked about when people try, like, I'm trying to read through your code. I can't find if this, that, or the other thing is allowed and everybody refers, do you have a use chart? Because like Jeff said, everybody is kind of going to that. This would be very helpful in that way.
So on the same kind of breadth, the, the second chart on the right there is the dimensional standards chart. So this is your, your setbacks, your minimum lot sizes, your, you can throw your impervious surface in here as well. But, and again, this is not the whole chart because it couldn't fit it on one page without making the text too small. But it shows all the dimensions broken up by zoning districts. So again, a quick reference guide for everyone to kind of see, what's the building height? What's the coverage? What's my setbacks? Front, side, rear setbacks? How's that play out? These are again, a lot of questions that you're gonna get from surveyors, builders, developers, and they will reference these parts quite often.
So question on the use chart. The very first line is use R one, R two, R three residential. I, I get that. But do you have a key that shows what that first line means? I mean, you've got the key for permitted use, conditional use, and accessory use, but do you have the B one, two, three, and et cetera, so that people understand what line they?
Sure. Saying, we, we can add that onto this one to make a little bit more understanding of the zoning districts. Down below there, each zoning district like says B one and then says it's your central business district or downtown area.
Where?
It would be further, it's in the, it's.
Further in five, section five. Oh, yeah, yeah, in, in the code itself. And that gets into the, the lengthy narrative of what each district is, yeah.
But, but we can definitely even kind of add it right above this chart to make it a little bit clearer for people to, to see that. That's an, that's an easy fix. We can definitely do that. We can do it above the dimension chart too.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, being able to visually see the keys and knowing where you graph.
I'd have to go elsewhere to find that and reference back. Yep.
Jeff, I got a quick question.
Yeah.
Right next to it is the dimensional standards chart. I, I can't read that.
Nope.
Yeah.
I can't even read it up there. Is, can you get us a copy or can you give us a copy so we can actually see what we're?
Yep. Yeah, certainly can. And in, and in the code, it's a lot readable. Like I said, when I threw it on the slide and I was trying to throw them both up here in, in one slide, I knew it was getting pretty small. So I do appreciate that.
Yeah, as, as we, as we've done at this meeting before, we have a public hearing and all that. Yeah, we'll get you the full text with how it will look.
Okay.
And then we can obviously take questions and comment.
And then did you incorporate the survey studies into the standards?
Correct.
Everything is.
Yep. Yep.
Then how much does this unified code handcuff the council? I mean, once we publish it, I think that's out there. Does it handcuff us to a certain extent or does it still give the elected officials some say and some sway over it? Or put something in there that allows a discussion on something that?
Or variances.
Variance or might fit the code, might fit the, the zoning for it, but the council or the town doesn't want that, I'd say.
Yeah, so, yeah, so Sean, I mean, it'll still have its variances in the conditional uses like we do now. I don't know if handcuff is the right word. I certainly, once you put something in code to go against the code blatantly, I've seen set some cities up for like lawsuit problems because they're like, we literally followed your code and you're not letting us do this or that sort of thing.
Right.
Generally, even like now, if we had something in our code that we thought was problematic, we would, we would try to address it. And codes are living things. Like we, we will likely stumble across stuff a year from now, two years from now, four years from now. They're like, oh, we kind of want to change that.
Right.
And now we have the frame that, that we can just go in and change our code.
Okay.
Because I think by, by and large, Sean, we're not proposing any huge drastic changes from what's permitted and conditional and all that now. It's for the most part, modernization of just some definitions and languages. What we'll try to highlight, maybe we can do a better job highlighting that like prior to the public hearing and when it comes back to council, what exactly are use changes that I think would be important for you to know? I think probably the big one would be accessory dwelling units. Is that something we really want to do? I think that's probably one of the, if not the biggest topic. Because I know we've talked about that in the past and the council's like, no, you really don't want to go down that path. But with the feedback we got from the survey, it's like, okay, we'll, we'll look at it and we'll draft some language up here, so.
But it's still, you'd say that according to the survey, people were, the majority was against it.
They were against the rental of them.
Right, the short-term rental aspect of it.
Yeah, this would be more for like family members, that type of thing.
Well, all right, so let's address that. Do we need to put in that it has to be immediate family and something like that? Like an elderly parent or a brother and sister-in-law or something? So we just don't get people that put up a, you know, a house and bring in a bunch of homeless drug addicts or whatever? I mean, that'll be a question that I'll get. And it sounds kind of harsh, but there are people that are kind-hearted and good, but then they bring that into neighborhoods, that's gonna set people apart, or they potentially could.
Yep, and I, if we get some time tonight, I can even just show you kind of some of the proposed language that kind of highlights that keeps it from being, keeps it from being used for, almost for a profit basis and like as a rental or other things and, and keeps it more into the dwelling of the person that's there.
Let's say it's a church, and I know we're already handcuffed with churches because if it's their mission, they can do it. But I'm just saying, we've, I've seen cities, we've read it in the paper and whatnot, that are putting up six, eight houses and then they're bringing in the homeless, you know? Well, God bless them, you know, but now you're doing it in a neighborhood. You have many churches that are located in neighborhoods.
And that's actually a whole nother part of the code. They, they actually added some language at the very end, I believe.
Yep.
So there's a lot to that.
Yeah, and, and that's probably not a good example, but I.
Oh, it is a good example, actually.
Where you could, where, where an individual is, you know, wants to help the world and puts this dwelling up and brings in four adults that are unrelated to help them with their recovery or whatever.
And that's a group home thing with other state laws.
That's more, yeah, that's a group home situation.
I just want to make sure that we're not, when we put this out there, that it handcuffs the council so they
Right.
take all the crap that we can't do anything about.
Sure.
It's easy if it's a state issued thing because I can say, call it to your state people. But, you know, they come to us first.
Yeah, and we can even go, I, I can get through my, the, the, kind of the key topics on one of these next slides and I can show you page one fifty-five of your code. It's just got a section of accessory dwelling units. I can show you one of the things on here. But one of the conditions we laid out there was either the home or the ADU that is on one property has to be owner occupied, one or the other. They have to. So that kind of puts more into, okay, somebody's gonna be living on this site and the person, the ADU, the ownership, it's not like somebody. Because I've had another community that I, we worked with recently with ADUs and they basically said, I don't want an entity, especially not a local entity, using it as either a for-profit or just a, even a rental kind of situation. And I don't want it to be, I want it to have some more value to it to where people are gonna take care of it. They're gonna have, they're gonna have people that they trust because they literally are living right next.
Well, that's, that's subjective though because we've seen that, that, that might not be the case. So to Josh's point earlier, I don't want to get us in a situation that we're gonna be sued. But is there a way, I'm not a lawyer, so I don't know, is there a way that we can put some disclaimers in there and/or be able to, in the unforeseen potential problem that might come up, is there a way that we can either go against code or have a disclaimer in there that says the city council at any time has a right to change this or revoke it or do whatever? So they see it before they even start looking, that, hey, yep, this is your code, it's laid out great. I think I want to do this, but it still has to come in front of the elected.
You certainly can. I mean, you can create a, you can create an accessory dwelling unit as a conditional use that needs a conditional use permit, then it has to come in front of the city council.
That's just one thing though that I'm thinking of. This addresses a lot of other things that I, I can't foresee right now. And that's, that's always my fear when we open these things up and we start changing them.
Sure.
Is that we're running into the unforeseen and we have had several issues where we.
Yep. And I think that's where, like they've said, we're not really changing a bunch right now. In fact, this might be making it more visible to us and so that if we do see something, we can say, oop, we want to jump on top of potentially making that a conditional use or that sort of thing. Like I said, I expect this to be changed constantly. Because like anything, like we as a community want our community to change constantly. So if we see this particular thing come up that maybe even right now is allowed in our code, but we just can't tell because it's harder to find stuff, that, that'll pop out to us and we can look at it.
Well, that's still a big leap of faith for me too though that, you know, because it is, it's always the unforeseen thing that, oh, we didn't catch it, we didn't do it.
And I would say you'll always have that. As much as I would love this to be perfect, it's never perfect and.
There, there's been a number of communities that I've been in where something has come in where they're like, gosh, shoot. Like maybe we didn't want that as a permitted use. Well, we gotta allow this one because they squeaked in, but we're gonna change it to a conditional use going forward type of situation.
Yeah.
But, 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 but without changing it right now, we may not even know that it exists. And so it's, it could still come in right now. We, we just don't know that it's there.
But I think ADUs are something that we do know about.
Correct.
And, and other communities have dealt with it. And so we need to learn from those communities, the heartache and, and, and the good and the bad of, of the ADUs. And, and try to make sure that our ordinances encompass the good and the bad. And, you know, I, I, I understand your point, Sean, and I also have concerns, you know, that we'll get these BBUs or small houses built. We'll get these ADUs or small houses built on certain property. And I'm all for helping those that are in need, but then we also have to realize what kind of. Potential issues we're bringing into the community. And that's not what we want. I mean, I love ADUs for aging parents. Grandparents, um, you know, kids coming out of college that don't have a place to live, but yet, you know, they're gonna pay. They have their house and they, they, you know, they're gonna pay some rent to their parents. But we have to be concerned about other instances. So, yeah, I.
And that's why I bring that up, like, that, that is a big change. And I know it's overall a small change, but it is a big topic and we've talked about it before. And it wasn't well received and I think that was over ten years ago and that's just like, yeah, we, we, we do need to talk about it.
Yeah, we do. We, we need to lock it down as much as we can, but still allow for some flexibility.
And that's what I've heard some other communities and that, that's what, I mean, and I'll definitely make sure that this, the language that's in here. That I share it with you and you can see it and I'll even get it on a slide for you and stuff so that as you kinda review it, we can talk about it some more again. Again, you don't have to do it, uh, right now. From a state perspective, it kinda is coming. If you've heard that the state is trying to like instigate a little bit more. Uh, flexibility for cities to allow ADUs in some way, shape or form. It was part of the missing middle document or whatever that the state was looking at, that they still will look at in their next year and their next session.
Band-aided to cities?
They have potentially talked about it. They haven't done it yet. It potentially talked about it. And some, that's why some cities are exploring, as you said, the flexibility of it, because I think what the state might say is you have to allow it in some way. Well, then you wanna kinda put some kind of restrictions on it.
And and I've heard about this before and that's very concerning that, you know, the cities are not having control over what kinda housing is allowed. So I think we need to be very. Considerate of our ordinances so that the city has as much control as possible. So if the state says you have to allow this kinda housing, okay, that we as a city have control. Over what that's gonna look like and who is gonna be able to occupy that.
And and yeah, really that'll come down from the state. I know there are a number of cities now, we're looking at eighty, ADU stuff in some form. Just so that way they can go to their legislators and say, hey, it's not like we're not allowing it. We, we are doing a step to allow this. Because there, I mean, there were talks of opening up to it, every, every lot has to allow an ADU, like and.
Yeah, no exceptions.
No, 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 no exceptions. And it didn't pass, but it's now come up like two or three years in a row. So we know it's gonna come at some point. And so there are a number of cities who are trying to find some sort of step to say, hey, like, we are offering this. It's not great to do a blanket thing, but we are offering it. So it's not like we're just saying no to them type of situation. So I think that's what a lot of cities are exploring, ADUs. Try, trying to find that middle ground, that way they can allow it, but it doesn't just have to be some. The, the state feels like it has to step in.
I know that, um.
We still have control over what that looks like.
Yeah, at some point, if the state decides that they want full control, there's not much we can do.
Yeah, well, I can.
Now, we've talked at, um, there's a scale tech team meeting, that's kind of an under group of scale within Scott County. And made up mostly of planners and economic development people and, um, of the cities that have allowed ADUs. There actually wasn't a lot of utilization on it yet. I don't know if that means that there won't be, but. It was kinda surprising to hear that even from, you know, the bigger cities, Jeff, obviously being in Prior Lake, but Jacobi and Savage. They hadn't seen many units, it was like under ten in the whole county.
But it's cost prohibitive right now.
Hundred percent.
And interest rates are crazy, so if people wanna build that kinda structure.
Yeah, because it's not like it's thirty grand, it's probably a hundred grand.
It is, yeah, it's six figures.
But it has to be what? They just can't pull a fish house back there and say.
No.
It has to be.
Me building cur, code and some of the other things I think Jeff had written in, uh, have to be plumbed through the main house.
Yeah, not a separate sewer and water line. That's part of that whole owner occupied, Hawaii service off of it. Same on, can't be separated on a separate lot, has to be on the same lot as a primary dwelling. A lot of those things are trying to kinda take baby steps or dip your feet into maybe allowing it to some small degree.
Limits it because your service is limiting, just you can't have, you know, unlimited flow.
Uh, uh, again, I'm not opposed to them for elderly parents or something, but I can just. There are people out there that wanna see the good in everything and they're gonna make it a home for recovering.
There are those who take advantage of everything.
Yeah, right. And they're, they live there. And I'm not, that's great that they want it, that doesn't mean that twelve houses that surround them want it.
You're concerned, I, I've heard it before and it's totally valid, it makes sense. I totally understand where you're coming from. Wanna keep going? So this one, um, this one, I, I'll go through a couple of those bullet points fairly quickly. Because I, the next slide I wanna get to a little bit more on, uh, the downtown zoning, uh, district overlay thing that we've got proposed for you. Really quick to showing you some of the graphics that are on the, on the right side. I stuck them on here. Again, I appreciate this text is small on some of them. These are a lot of the, of the graphics that, uh, mainly were put into some of the definition sections of your code. Colored graphics, really quick point of reference that show what a lot is. How, where we measure front yard, side yard setbacks, how a property is laid out with hard surface or not hard surface. What a building height, where it's measured at, how that is. That text will be larger in your code. It will be easy to decipher and we can. You can take these graphics, you can put them on handouts, you can put them on, um, things on your website to help the public and. And builders and and contractors, developers, surveyors really understand, again, what you're getting at, not just. This is what a lot depth and the definition of a lot depth is. You can visually see exactly how you're measuring that, that depth on, on that as well. So it's putting some visuals in your, in your code really does, does help. So we created these from scratch for you guys to go through that. Um, I'll go through a couple of the bullet points. We, we didn't really make a lot of changes to your RL ninety, RL eighty four, RL seventy. Those we just kinda renamed to R one, two and three, just because it's consistent with your other ones. I know those.
Nobody knew what those meant.
Those kinda went to, I think it was lot width, was it?
It was lot area.
So just to make it consistent, lot areas are still there, um, but we've just again clarifying that. Second bullet point, incorporation of a tree preservation ordinance language. This is something I did in Prior Lakes, uh, over a decade ago. They were having trouble with, and I, I understand that you might have had trouble with it too. Uh, people come in, they, they wanna develop a property, they cut down the trees before they do it. You know, they wanna, they, they wanna like, they don't wanna do as much tree replacement. Um, maybe there's not enough teeth in the code to allow for. Relandscaping or doing tree replacement or preserving some significant trees or, um, areas. Um, so what we, what we kind of are proposing here is, um, a percentage basis where they. They total up the number of inches on, on the tree plans on the site. If they're going to provide you with a development plan, a building permit, some kind of. Um, permit need from the city, they have to total up these inches and they measure it, the trunk of the tree. And you can remove up to like thirty or thirty-five percent of the trees on the site without having to replace it. If you remove more than that, you have to replace ever so many inches, um, of trees, uh, with re-landscaping trees. It, it incentivizes people to not clear cut a site, but it still gives them flexibility to allow them to do some tree removes. Because if you're gonna put up a structure, if you're gonna put up a development, um, you're gonna have tr- tree removes and things of that nature. It does not, uh, one of the things in here is does not, um, penalize people for true removes. That may be necessary for public utilities or streets. So those are things in the right of way or an easement for a public utility. Because those are kinda necessities as part of developments, uh, to develop a property. But even still, on the private lots and the revegetation of it, whether it be through your landscaping code or this is tree preservation ordinance. It allows those, those trees to get replanted and revegetated back on the site. So again, it's offering, trying to offer flexibility, give you a little more teeth in your code about, um, trees being preserved. And re-landscaped on the sites.
And if trees are planted, is there a requirement for the size?
Yes.
Yes, yes. And species too. I mean, it's, it's more of your hardy, coniferous and deciduous, your maples, your oaks. Obviously, ash trees is no longer on the list. It was years ago, uh, for a lot of communities, but no longer. But it, it, it specifies those trees and even goes a little bit farther. If there's a very large tree. Kinda labeled as a heritage tree. You got like a fifty inch wide diameter trunk. It offers an incentive for preserving something like that and almost making it a focal point in the development. I've seen some developers be like, that's a really cool looking tree and we really wanna grade our grading plan so that we have that tree and that tree and that tree. And uses it in their development plan a little bit. And it kinda gives them a little incentive to preserve it on the backend of their percentage of their formula, so.
So what if they deserve it, but because maybe the way they dug the foundation or something kills the root structure and then eventually dies. Are you gonna be required to replace that tree?
Yep, there's, so when they do their grading, generally what you do is your root structure is generally kinda the canopy of the tree. So that's something that with your grading plan, you kinda ensure that with their erosion control fencing, with their other things, they're ensuring that. You can kinda escrow funds that would say the same thing. If the tree ends up dying right away, they're in construction. Now, granted, older trees, like they may die, but if, if it's dying right there with construction. Yeah, you kinda have to watch some of those, those preservations. And you generally, your engineering, all the work staff, they're gonna go out, they're gonna make sure the erosion control fencing is put up accordingly. It's preserving, again, the, the canopies and the root systems of trees. And these developers are, they're generally, if they're, if they're going to the effort of preserving it, they're gonna want it to. So they're trying to, trying to keep that. But that's something you can do through your process.
Can you tell me again, uh, the general guideline deals with measuring the circumference of all of the trees? It's the. Only trees over a certain size.
Yeah, they have to be at least, I believe, at least six inches in diameter. So it's not like a, just a, a volunteer little sprig or two inch or three inch. It's gotta be at least six inches in diameter to be what's called a significant tree to be counted, uh, for that. And then when they're.
They do that anyway. When they're surveying, they're already noting that on these.
Surveyors are very familiar with it, landscape architects, arborists, anybody that's measuring trees and does it for a living.
With the mo- most recent example, that's probably highlighted this, there's a lot of shoots that were just wild. Growth, basically.
Yep.
And they did get to six inches, some of them, but they're just from the root of a.
Right.
Tree, which you wouldn't want calculated on one thing, but.
Is there a way to like, yeah, I don't know how.
I would.
I hear what you're saying.
I, I would be, I think we have to look at that pretty hard because I could see some issues.
I'd say I do wonder if, yeah, there, can there be some sort of exception, like some arborist, like an arborist comes in and says, yeah, you in fact don't want X, Y, Z. Even though they would be considered. Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I have.
To Sean's point, flexibility, um, from being able to look at some of that stuff.
Can write that in.
Yeah, we might have to look at that. I mean, I've got trees on my cabin property that are large, but they're all from a root. Because they've been there for fifty years, thirty years, long, long periods of time. And there's a lot of examples of that in this. Development site that was tore up, but.
Keeping going, the next one's architectural design requirements. This is something I kinda hinted at earlier. Not only in residential, but commercial industrial especially, what, one things that we included in the code in draft language. Was kind of a pick list on some of the design that you could do, not just on material, but on some of the, the types of designs. So do they have all, do they have varying colors? Do they have walls that, um, show varying wall segments? Where it's not just a plain three hundred foot wall pattern that doesn't have a breakup in it. Um, does it have an entrance that has, um, a overhang or focal point to the entryway? Something that adds a little more character, especially when you get into a business park or industrial building. Now, they're trying to, their, their, their money isn't just getting the building, building and the frame up and trying to make it. I mean, they, they're still gonna wanna add a little color to it for their own sake. But if you can offer some incentives and saying, here's six or seven criteria, you gotta pick three of them and at least put three of the six. On your plan, differentiating colors, differing wall heights, differentiating, um, depth in the walls. Uh, like I said, entry, uh, putting entry focal point, uh, around the main entrance. Doing types of different materials within your wall segments. Then you're not getting such plain buildings that go up. It's worked in other communities.
And it gives variety because everybody doesn't have to pick the same things. It's a menu that they.
Yes, it's a menu that they pick from and such like that, so. It's not so stoic on your architectural design requirements. It's been pretty successful. Again, something I, I used in Prior like very effectively for several years. They've seen a lot of improvements in their buildings as well. I've seen it in a couple other, um, similar codes in, in other communities too. The next one, revisions of the planning and development regulations. We gave you a little bit more teeth into kinda giving, um, when you, you review a PUD. As developers, they see it somewhat as a negotiation of what, what can they get for the modifications to a lot size or a lot standard or something that they're. That doesn't fit, uh, to your code, but allows you to say, well, then you have to have in your code, you have to have. Again, a pick list of criteria that it needs to meet some of these criteria from lifecycle housing or different architectural design. Or some other type of public benefit.
More parks.
More parks, uh, a certain trail that you need in an area that is more of a regionalized trail, not just for their development. It could even be picking up on some utility infrastructure needs, um, from a lift station or, and the costs of that. Or a trunk line that they're paying the entirety of because it's running through their project. And so they're picking up the oversizing on those things. Those are all public benefits that are over and above the standard, what they would have with their project. And we included some, um, some generalized language to allow council, planning commission, the flexibility to kinda. For lack of a better word, negotiate that into a, a development agreement.
And I would say the big difference in what we're proposing in that language for planning and development versus now is we were getting very little, if nothing. In trade for flexibility for the developer. We were getting almost no public benefit, so. This is a, a good negotiating thing that we actually have some, some say in that.
The next few bullet points there, because I wanna get to the bottom one. The next few ones, uh, are fairly simple. We added some code language that identified when a certificate of survey is required in your code. In other words, what, what type of building activity requires it, what type doesn't? Uh, you can use off an existing survey or some kind of aerial foot site plan. Gives you, again, a little bit more, your, your code a little more teeth and, and understanding when, when you need that as part of a building permit. Or some kind of land use application. We provided for provisions for public hearings for your variances and CUPs. Exactly when and how and how's that process work laid out to have a public hearing. Mailers, notifications, what's the timing of it, those kinda things. Um, administrative permits for fences and, uh, sheds, residential accessory structures like a shed. Uh, based on the, the code language, there's kind of a desire that people would intend to get those permits. If it was something of a free service that you offered, didn't necessarily charge for it, but.
We are not requiring those permits currently, uh, has led to all kinds of problems over the past fifteen years, so. Even if it's free, we're taking the phone calls anyway, helping people, I know Evan gets fence questions.
Every other call I get is someone asking like height of fences and where they can put it. And then it's like, so do you come out and check it? It's like, no.
So then, yeah.
So then they don't follow.
And then we'll see if something get done and we'll go, oh, I goofed that up.
You kinda wanna look at it, especially with your easements. That's the biggest thing. You got pipes in the ground, you got easements in the ground. You don't really wanna fence or shed stuck right over the top, just only to tell the property owner, uh, several months later or a couple of years later, hey. Gotta fix that water main down there or something like that. You're gonna have to move your fence and, well, are you gonna fix it? Well, we don't, you don't have to, but I can understand as city officials, that's, that's sometimes a nervous pull. Because, well, that's my fence and I invested a lot in that. It's like, well, it shouldn't have been there in the first place. One kinda simple check at city hall. Can I, let me check the easements or see if there's a pipe in that area before you put your fence up, you know, kinda thing.
Makes sense.
So, that's kinda what that's doing. Just updated some parking minimum space requirements. Parking standards are not really what they used to be. Um, a lot of communities have higher parking standards be based on, especially in a commercial district area. Than what the needs were once looked at. And that's because, especially from a retail span standpoint, uh, shopping and. Or even restaurants, especially if they allow for different fast food options. They don't, they don't desire as much parking as they once did. So we kinda tried to update that with industry standards, um, in looking at some of those. Didn't, uh, by no means are we saying you don't need parking. Didn't, eh, by no means are we saying you don't need parking in, in areas, but uh, but just trying to, to keep it consistent with today's.
You just don't want sees of parking that doesn't ever get used.
Never use and it's hard surface, the pavement that. We already talked about accessory dwelling units a little bit. Uh, general updates with state statutes, industry standards that uh, that you did. And then on the next slide, I'll have you go for the west downtown overlay. I wanted to share this one with you. Get your thoughts on it. So Ken had mentioned, and I know that with your comp plan, you considered looking at um, what you call the downtown flex or the commercial flex. Um, that allowed options, particularly in the western portion of your downtown, on your old, your old mill site. On the site that you're looking to redevelop into that, kinda that park area, uh, just north of.
Opps area.
Opps area, there you go, just north of, of Main Avenue there. Um, and one of the things we wanted to kinda propose here is something that allows for a transition. Um, so an overlay district, much like, works a little bit differently than in just a straight zoning and rezoning this area to be in and of itself. What we would propose that you consider is zoning the whole area that's highlighted in yellow or surrounded in yellow to your B one central business. So that would be the, the pink areas, just like your central business area. And that would allow those types of land uses as permitted or conditional uses, just like you would downtown. Um, you would have to rezone some of those areas. I know you've got some that are in your business park, your, your C three business park, your industrial. Um, you know, your blue, your, your red, your purple areas would have to consider rezoning to um, pink to the, to the central business. And you can do that through the zoning code here. But then you would look into what's called an overlay district. So on your zoning map, there would be kind of a line, similar to this yellow line drawn around it. You can name it whatever overlay district. I just chose west downtown for simplification here. But it's something that where in that area, you could allow existing work to be allowed. So such as if they're doing remodeling or work that's required by code to the existing structures, they can continue their land uses. But what you're trying to do is incentivize with redevelopment of the area, that those comply with either your B one zoning. And you do it through a conditional use or an interim use permit, you could consider a variance for a specific case. But you almost allow through those processes of redevelopment, you're looking to try to make this more downtown like. Or more something that would consider similar to your, to your B one uses. Um, one of the other things I just wanted to mention and I'll open it up for any kinda questions on this one is, from a parking standpoint, I know some of these uses have more onsite parking rather than um, parking that would be on the public streets or downtown parking. As part of that interim use variance process, conditional use, you could look at a specific parking plan and basically customize that parking plan for that specific site or that specific redevelopment. And kinda look at it and, and see for your own case as a city, do you feel that there's enough parking based on the land uses proposed, based on if, is it a, is it a commercial land use that's a restaurant? Is it something that is retail? Is it something that's more of an office complex? Um, is it something that's more of an event center, activity area that might have some parking needs? What, what an overlay district allows you to do, it allows you to kinda put some customized things in your code that you can add in addition to just your general commercial zoning. And kinda looking at your business flex or your areas, you were looking at ways to try to be flexible in this area without um, being over demanding to a, to a redevelopment.
And I would say one big thing that Jeff and I talked about, and I think we heard this from the council, when that railcar repair, for example, at the mill. It was like, I think it was unanimous at the council, that was too far in continuing, you know, the reuse of that site or the continued use of that site. And we've had other interim uses that are more to the downtown, so this is trying to find that, that happy medium kinda between just going full B one, you gotta meet that, it's a unique building, unique site. The creamery uh, pop site is unique in that you have, you know, some kinda typical downtown businesses. But then the bowling alleys are the big parking lot. So like trying to recognize that it's a unique area. And this allows you to recognize that and have redevelopment happen, but allow things that are there to continue again, to a degree. But moving to that more B one look as we have through the whole downtown area there.
And it kinda works as a transitional area. I mean, you've got some residences, residential areas to the north, to the south. You've got highway, um, highway twenty-one, right? Highway twenty-one further to the, to the, to the west there. So you're transitioning between your downtown to your other adjacent kinda areas around it. And as part of, when you go through a conditional use permit, when you go through an interim use, you can tack on, you've probably done it before. Certain landscaping standards, some screening standards, some hours of operations standards, these are all things per case of whatever's being requested, whatever type of business or land use, you can kinda be more specific in that area um, from that perspective, so.
For example, the restaurant that's in that area, could we require? I don't know how much property they own, but could we require that portion of that be paid for parking? As opposed to gravel?
Potentially could, yes. So I think recognizing like particularly on that east or the west end of town there, if you get west of the railroad, very limited on-street parking. Unlike, I know some people argue we don't have enough parking downtown, but there's not parking on the north side of Main Street, for example, as you get west of the railroad. So you gotta kinda recognize that, can't say, oh, in normal B one district, you don't have to have off-street parking. Well, where else are you gonna park if you don't? So this recognizes that, again, it's different, but you do have to look at it, property by property.
Okay, yeah, I'm just looking.
And that gives, again, the council the review and the, the.
And more, more aesthetically pleasing as well.
Correct.
Thank you.
Does it make sense? I know I kinda went through it kinda quick, but I, I'm trying to give you some, again, flexibility for your businesses types.
Move away from that industrial.
Move away from it eventually, but still not force so much change immediately kinda situation.
It's kinda the way we've been doing the interim use permits, but this gets away from those interim use permits that have a definitive end date. Uh, I'll just use, for example, the esthetician, the dog groomer in there, is it really just fine, but it's been zoned industrial. So this would move it into a, let's say, B one with an overlay, then they're gonna have to worry about a deadline coming up in a year and a half that we had to fix the zoning. This would establish zoning that they would fit within, we can move on. We've already established the conditions and everything, so.
I know you got another meeting you wanna get to, so like, questions.
This is not the end of the process, by the way, by any means, so.
I'm glad you wrote up the RV in the trailer, because it sounds like that would be a, a new non-conforming use. And as soon as they pull it off and then put it on next year, it becomes a illegal non-conforming use. So we have an enforcement issue that we have right off the bat. But um, I'd be interested in knowing if there's any other new non-conforming uses created with these changes.
Yeah, we can kinda write up a summary of that.
Hopefully there aren't.
Yeah, cause it just ends up being an enforcement.
Right, that some of these changes are more forward looking, not necessarily.
We can change a lot of your like zoning districts outside of this spot. We didn't really propose any changes to current zoning parcels and um, didn't move a lot of your um, land uses around too much in and out of zones that would create non-conformies to what's there today.
And then Sean, you mentioned that, that it was the survey data input into this. Was that the process that you guys went through?
Yeah, we waited.
Pretty much take whatever the survey.
Yeah, and, and whether you fully agree with it, like on the, the ADU, the accessory dwelling unit information, we put it in there. But it fits ultimately, you're looking like, no, we don't, we don't wanna do that.
So everything that's in there is in here and you still have to go through the process of gleaning what you want and what you don't want.
Right, unless, unless the survey showed there was no interest, we didn't include that.
Okay, so how do we, just so we don't miss something?
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll, we'll make that very clear. Cause nobody's gonna read through two hundred and seventy, whatever pages.
The, 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 one of the major ones is the reduction of lot size, I, seems to me anyway.
Yes.
A lot of research or thinking being put into that and.
A lot.
If there's background, that'd be interesting to know what data or graphs or what, what.
Give you a little bit more.
How will that make our community different by going down in size? Imagine it's much harder to have an accessory building than with impervious, all that stuff with smaller sizes.
Yep, that all.
Why would they be smaller? I mean, shows almost two to one, it is more than two to one.
So that's one thing that, so the preference that people had was to have a bigger lot. We're hearing from developers, which is obviously the ones that developing, looking to have, uh, we're not talking major change, like from nine thousand square foot potentially to eighty-three hundred square foot. Um, so it's got.
You, you can fit more houses in, which um, from a city perspective also means more taxpayers, so, um, but.
Yeah, that, we want that feedback from everybody. I'm sure we'll have developers comment on, you know, those provisions. We'll have property owners comment on, hey, I don't like that you would have lots smaller than my lot, you know, that kinda thing.
But we, we see in the urban locations that lot sizes are a lot smaller and houses are very close to each other. You know, some people like the idea of having that single family home, but not having all of that yard work. So you kinda.
So yeah, we, we have some background on that.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you.
If you have any questions, feel free to send them to myself or Evan and we'll.
Yeah, I guess uh, make a motion to adjourn.
Set, set.
Seconded by Sean Ryan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, next meeting, number two of three.